Southern Tennessee Regional Health System. Pulaski is here to help you be well. Our mission is to make our community healthier and we're your community hospital. We're committed to providing trusted care when you need it most. From wellness checks to emergencies, we're here for you and your family. Visit us today at SouthernTennessee.com or call 931-363-7531.
When it comes to real estate, Haney Realty and Property Management is the team you can trust. Our extensive knowledge of the market and industry allows us to help our clients with any real estate need. We know how to get results. So whether you're looking to buy, sell, or rent, let us put our expertise to work for you. Call us today at 931-347-9150 or visit HaneyRealtyPound.com to learn more. Haney Realty and Property Management, your best friend in real estate. If you're looking for a new job, let M&amp;M Staffing be your guide. With over 20 years of experience, we know how to connect great people with great opportunities. We work with over 80 companies, so we're sure to find the perfect job for you. Our team is dedicated to helping you succeed, and our high customer satisfaction rate proves it. Ready to get started? Visit us at M&amp;MStaffing.net or give us a call today at 931-347-4255.
For over 50 years, PES Energize has been proudly powering our community in Pulaski and Giles County, Tennessee. We're dedicated to providing safe, reliable, and innovative services. At PES Energize, we believe that serving you is a privilege. We're here for all your energy needs. Visit PESEnergize.com or call us today.
The natural gas department of Pulaski is here to help you save money. Natural gas is safe, efficient, and cost-effective. It's up to 50 to 60% less expensive than electricity for home heating. Plus, it's clean and efficient, so you can feel good about your choice. Call us today for service or visit our website to learn more. Make the switch to natural gas and start saving today.
When it comes to insurance, Winterboro and Associates Insurance is the team you can trust. We offer coverage for your home, auto, business, and more. We work hard to find the best policy for you at the best price. Our personalized service means we take the time to understand your needs and make sure you understand your options. We want you to feel confident and secure with your insurance policy. Let us make insurance simple for you. Get a quote today at WinterboroInsurance.com or call us at 931-363-8638.
Southern Tennessee Regional Health System. Pulaski is here to help you be well. Our mission is to make our community healthier and we're your community hospital. We're committed to providing trusted care when you need it most. From wellness checks to emergencies, we're here for you and your family. Visit us today at SouthernTennessee.com or call 931-363-7531.
When it comes to real estate, Haney Realty and Property Management is the team you can trust. Our extensive knowledge of the market and industry allows us to help our clients with any real estate need. We know how to get results. So whether you're looking to buy, sell, or rent, let us put our expertise to work for you. Call us today at 931-347-9150 or visit HaneyRealtyPound.com to learn more. Haney Realty and Property Management, your best friend in real estate. If you're looking for a new job, let M&amp;M Staffing be your guide. With over 20 years of experience, we know how to connect great people with great opportunities. We work with over 80 companies, so we're sure to find the perfect job for you. Our team is dedicated to helping you succeed, and our high customer satisfaction rate proves it. Ready to get started? Visit us at M&amp;MStaffing.net or give us a call today at 931-347-4255.
For over 50 years, PES Energize has been proudly powering our community in Pulaski and Giles County, Tennessee. We're dedicated to providing safe, reliable, and innovative services. At PES Energize, we believe that serving you is a privilege. We're here for all your energy needs. Visit PESEnergize.com or call us today.
The natural gas department of Pulaski is here to help you save money. Natural gas is safe, efficient, and cost-effective. It's up to 50 to 60% less expensive than electricity for home heating. Plus, it's clean and efficient, so you can feel good about your choice. Call us today for service or visit our website to learn more. Make the switch to natural gas and start saving today.
When it comes to insurance, Winterboro and Associates Insurance is the team you can trust. We offer coverage for your home, auto, business, and more. We work hard to find the best policy for you at the best price. Our personalized service means we take the time to understand your needs and make sure you understand your options. We want you to feel confident and secure with your insurance policy. Let us make insurance simple for you. Get a quote today at WinterboroInsurance.com or call us at 931-363-8638.
You good?
Yeah.
Understood.
All rise. County Corrus, National Treasure, Alamo Grand South.
Mr. Reed, we need a prayer, please, please.
Let's pray. Lord, we thank you for the day. We thank you for the gentle rain that we had today that would replenish the moisture in the soil, give us green growth, flowers, and things of the beauty of this landscape that it can prove to us that you're a true living God, have things in your hand and scheme of life that you have set forth. Lord, we ask you as we talk about county business, we ask you to give us wisdom about how to handle our infrastructure that we've neglected for so long. And Lord, we just ask you that we feel the responsibility and accountability for taking care of these issues and these problems, and that we work together to find good solutions. Lord, I ask you to be with the people that have had hurt during the bad weather, the hurricanes on the coast, the tornadoes, and the much flooding that we've had around. Also, Lord, for our own here, I ask you to be with David Adams as he has issues with his health and unknowns, and help him to have peace of mind as he waits for results and tests, to know that you have things in control and that you're the great healer. And Lord, I know that you have given gifts of healing to many individuals, and may the medical staff that he contacts be those that you have given that gift to. We thank you for answering our prayers on behalf of Brother Sutton and also Tim, as we have lifted them up before, and that they have had some improvement in their health and are able to be back here. Lord, be with us in this session today. Help us to look forward to the things of the future, and know that that future is always non-ending for those that are believers. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And there are any corrections to the agenda that was forwarded? Okay, seeing none, the agenda is approved.
Sir.
Oh, what's that?
Yes, I had a suggestion that we modify the agenda somewhat.
We can't hear you.
Okay, good. I have a suggestion that we cover Resolution 2025-18 prior to the Amendment of 2025-17, since it contains the approval of the opioid fund, and 2025-17 has within it the opioid fund approved.
That's correct, okay. So the motion's been made to move 2025-18 ahead of 17. Is there a second? Okay, we got a second. Any comments or discussion? Any opposition to that move? Okay, that's what, by unanimous consent, we're gonna do 2025-18 first and then do 2025-17. Thank you. Any other corrections to the agenda? Okay, seeing none, I move forward. Thank you, Mr. Reed. Okay, minutes have been forwarded. I'll entertain a motion to approve your minutes. Okay, motion from Mr. Reiser, second from Mr. Wilber. Any corrections to the minutes? Okay, seeing none, the minutes were approved by unanimous consent. Okay, I can't believe three months has passed, but it's time to do another employee of the quarter. Can I have Lieutenant Amber Remagen join me at the podium? That's what you're here for.
Oh, that's what I was hoping for.
This is the citation accompanying the Giles County Employee of the Quarter Award to Lieutenant Amber Remagen, Giles County EMS. Lieutenant Amber Remagen is cited for meritorious service in the performance of duty from January to March 2025, serving as critical care paramedic with the Giles County Emergency Medical Service. Ms. Remagen's achievements exemplified our core values of integrity, stewardship, and excellence. She consistently demonstrated a steadfast dedication to her responsibilities, going above and beyond, provides superior service to our community. Ms. Remagen is a uniquely compassionate paramedic and a proactive problem solver who creates opportunities to enhance operations and improve patient care. Her collaboration to improve and implement protocols was critical to the project's success. Lieutenant Remagen is a gifted leader who is devoted to strengthening her team's performance in a fast-paced, high-stakes environment. Her voluntary assistance to the emergency medical responder training program was indicative of her selfless commitment to the citizens of Giles County. Throughout this quarter, she was an exemplary performer. Her unwavering commitment to public service is commendable. In recognition of her extraordinary performance, we hereby recognize Amber as Giles County's Employee of the Quarter. Ms. Remagen's pursuit of excellence and devotion to duty are most heartily commended or in keeping with the highest traditions of Giles County Public Service. Well done. Proud of you. And now I'm gonna turn the podium over to the EMS chief, Willow Chavez. So I think I mentioned a few months ago that she was selected as one of the most excellent and highest achievement in terms of education throughout the state in EMS. And as a result of that, she was handpicked, selected to go on a special training trip with a bunch of other high-qualified Tennessee participants. So she wanted to tell you about that, and she's got, and give you the podium, and I'm gonna get you the HD mic.
See if technology's gonna cooperate.
Oh, that's for your, that's for your AM stand. Here comes our tech. I don't have a remote for the key.
We made it. Thanks for being patient. All right, I just wanted to take a few minutes to tell you all about the trip. I know there's been some questions, so I wanted to give you some information about it and hopefully answer some of those questions today. So the Tennessee EMS Educators Association has, over the last three or four years, taken paramedic student cohorts on this trip to London to ride with the London Ambulance Service. Well, this year, they opened it up to members of the association. There's an application process, and Dustin Blade, our training officer, and myself, we're lucky enough to get selected for this. All right, so basically, we wanted to see what are other healthcare systems doing? What are they doing that we can try to emulate here? I know there's a lot of talk about socialized medicine and all those kind of things. We're not trying to bring socialized medicine to Giles County or anything like that, but there were some lessons that we learned from this trip that I wanted to share with you. First and foremost, though, I wanted to talk about how the trip was funded. So this trip was funded using grant money. So I wanted to be really clear about that, how we budgeted for that, and where that money came from. That money did not come from county money, it came from grant money that we received from the state. All right, so the purpose of the trip was really to evaluate another healthcare system. London Ambulance Service is known as one of the most efficient systems in the world. So we wanted to see what they do and how they operate their system. So as far as the agenda, we went over there for a week. Couple of those days were travel, took a while to get there. But I'll talk about that in a second. But I did wanna mention the agencies that were represented. So there was 31 personnel from 13 different agencies across the state that were represented on this trip. We were hosted by St. George's University. We spent a couple of days with them. We trained with a physician, we did an anatomy lab and a pathology lab with one of their faculty physicians that trains their paramedic cohorts. And then we spent the day shadowing their paramedics as they went through some of their training, some of their scenario training and their check-offs and things that they do to get them ready and make sure they're ready to be field operators out in the world. And then Wednesday and Thursday, we did ride-alongs with the London Ambulance Service. So we got to get on the ambulance, go out, and see how their system operated. And it was really, really interesting to see that when their paramedic showed up on a call, for us, we show up on a call anticipating transport, always. We wanna transport the patients, we wanna make sure we get them to the hospital, and we get them the resources that they need. And here, the only way that we can do that is to transport them. In this system, they don't do that. They arrive on scene, and they're able to directly funnel that patient into the resource that they need. It might be a phone call with the general practitioner, it might be an urgent care visit, it might be somebody coming to their house and doing a follow-up with them. So that was something that we were able to see firsthand through their system, and also how they deal with mental health challenges. So particularly myself, we had a call during my ride-along with a patient experiencing mental health crisis. And to see how they got that patient directly to the resources that they needed was really, really incredible to see, because we don't do that here. And it's a process. So I just wanted to share that with you, and I wanted to share the benefit of it, how that aligns with what we're trying to do, how progressive we're trying to be, the things that we're looking for with our agency, things that we can do better, and how we can integrate some of those modalities into what we do every day. We talk about community paramedicine all the time, and it's something that I've been grinding on for the last two years, trying to figure out how to fund it, how to find grant money that'll support a program like that. And what I finally realized by watching this firsthand is there's a lot that we can do with the resources that we currently have. And I'll get into that a little bit more in a minute, because when I brought this information back and shared it with my people, they actually kind of flipped the switch. They kind of came up with the idea that it's gonna get it all going, and I'm really excited to share that with you. All right, so ultimately, we gained a better understanding of integrated healthcare models. What does that mean? Basically, just what I've shared with you. How do we get people integrated into the system where anybody that's navigating our healthcare system knows what a challenge it can be, I'm sure? Just getting a specialty care appointment, just getting a surgery consult, just getting whatever, right? The wait times are long, sometimes if you go to the ER, the wait times there are long depending on what's going on. And a lot of times, the patient doesn't need to go to the ER. We encounter patients every day that do not need to go to the ER. So figuring out what resources they need and being able to coordinate those within the healthcare system is really what we're trying to do. So what, right? So our mission is to bring care and compassion to our community, and that's something that every single employee at the ambulance service knows, because it's literally written on the wall inside the main station, and it's something that we talk about every day. That's where our mission is. Sometimes, that does require us to go to people's houses multiple times a day. People that don't necessarily need a ride to the ER, but they need something. They need assistance, they need to be moved in their bed, or they need to be propped up, or they need whatever it is. It's not something that we get paid for, but it's something that we do to provide that service to our community, because if we don't do it, nobody else is going to. All right. Don't mind the wild animal that she's holding, but this is one of our ADMTs. This is Grace Lepines. And a picture's worth a thousand words, right? You can tell by these photographs where her heart is, what kind of compassionate spirit she has. So I bring this information back, and I'm sharing all this cool stuff about the trip and all of the lessons learned, and just how excited you were to bring this information back. I'm telling her about it, and she comes to me a few days later, and she says, "I've got an idea." And she tells me about this idea, and it's a run-in joke that whenever somebody brings me an idea, that it forces them to do more work. So she said, "I wanna come up with this program where we can track these patients that we go to frequently and figure out what resources they need." And I was like, "That's a great idea. Can we have it by the end of the week?" And she was like, "No." I was like, "That's okay. Just let me know when you get it to a point where you want me to look at it again." So literally, two days later, she's like, "Okay, I've got it. It's ready." So she calls it Project Patient. But basically, what this is, and I've redacted a bunch of the information, I'll show you the details in a second, but basically, we have patients that call us frequently for things, again, that don't require ambulance transport. So this is a tracking matrix. And basically, what we're tracking is, obviously, their demographics, their information, and what resources they need. And then we take this information, and we talk to the hospital about this, because we've had a couple of patients recently where this has come to fruition, where we had these situations, the patients were in very difficult living conditions, they needed resources, but the hospital wasn't seeing what EMS was seeing, because they just don't. They don't always see the living conditions, or they don't always know what resources a patient does or doesn't have available at home, and those messages just weren't getting relayed very well. So we got to the point where we were taking patients back into really poor living conditions, and it was quite frankly causing ethical dilemma for our people, because we don't wanna take them back to those conditions. We don't wanna put them back in the same conditions that we've just pulled them out of, if they don't care. So we took the idea of this tracking matrix, and in our last hospital meeting, we talked about it, and we discussed it, and the hospital's fully on board with us having as-needed meetings, monthly meetings. We don't know exactly what it's gonna look like yet, but where we have nursing staff, we have case management, we have people that represent the hospital, all sitting at a table together discussing these cases. And we bring them a case and say, "This patient needs X, Y, and Z," and then we give them the resources that they need. And I know that sounds really simple, and it sounds like something that should be happening anyway, but it doesn't. So we have these patients listed, we track them, active, permanent, or deceased. And just for an example, you can see this one up here, if you can read the writing, it's kind of small. 26 calls between March 19th and March 22nd. So in about a two-week time period, we went to that residence 26 times. This patient needed resources. This particular patient was living alone, could not get out of her bed to go to the bathroom or even feed herself. And those messages weren't getting relayed very well to the hospital. And the other thing that comes up is that a lot of times, these patients, they don't want their freedoms taken away. They're scared of asking for resources, or they're scared of having to give up that freedom and go into a skilled nursing facility. So they don't always want it. But it took this long, longer than this actually, to kind of get that message relayed to the hospital and get her the help that she needed, and she's now in a care facility. But these are the patients that we're talking about. The one under that, approximately 14 times. The one under that, approximately fourteen times a month, we were going to that residence. So these are just some rough estimates of what that actually costs us when we go on these calls. And we don't get paid for those calls. If we don't transport, we don't get reimbursed for any of that. So you have time, you have resources, you have wear and tear on our vehicles, mileage, gas, all of those things that, that we spend money to go and provide that service. And we want to provide that service, but it does come at a cost. And so this is what that costs, rough estimates, just to kind of give you an idea. So the whole purpose of this is that integrated healthcare model, to be able to bring back resources to the patient, erect them to what they need, and reduce the burden on us, but also reduce the burden on the ER. And ultimately, it's what's best for the patient. Because instead of these multiple trips to the hospital, multiple admissions for things that could have been preventable if they'd just gotten what they needed in the first place. That's the whole point of this. So that's what we took away from the trip. I know that sounds kind of silly to, to say it that way, but it's a lot of things coming full circle. And the ability to go and see a system that works and figure out how we can integrate that into what we do here every day was something that I don't think we, it's going to be a while until we fully recognize the benefits of that. But it's already benefiting patients. So, thank you.
Thanks again, Willow. Appreciate your leadership.
Thank you.
Mr. Reese had to unexpectedly go out of town. So he wanted to print out his report, and he said, "If you have any questions, just give him a call later this week, please." And Barbara is here to give you a report. Now, on May first, I think 2:00 PM at the Archives, we're going to have a farewell gathering for Barbara. But she wanted to do a farewell address. Maybe we'll call it a farewell challenge.
A plea.
Yeah, a farewell plea. So Barbara, thanks for all you've done at the Archives. I'm going to give you the podium.
Okay.
May first, I'll announce it again.
How are y'all?
Friends. I put a report in front of you that Graham actually asked me to get the statistics on a few weeks ago. And it was a little shocking even to me, although we've been taking records out of the courthouse for six years. Well, really three, but anyway, we have only removed a quarter to a third of the records that we have generated for Giles County. Now, that is shocking. Our archives is full. I appreciate y'all coming back and everything you got to see, and we're, we're full. So I wanted to bring that to your attention because y'all are going to be working on this beautiful courthouse here shortly. And this is the bottom line. We've got to have a place to put the records. They cannot stay in this building while we're doing renovation. There, some of them are still in such bad shape downstairs in the basement and other places that need attention. By the way, we, as an archives or archivist, we're not supposed to remove those records until the county clerk tells us that we can handle them. When they tell us that they're released and they're ready to give them up, then we can take them to the archives and work on them. And some of them would have to be returned because of our space issue. We could work on them and then return. And I enclosed a few of the pictures on the last three pages. They were just taken a few days ago downstairs. I just want you to see, it's, it's embarrassing how these records look. Each court clerk is the custodian of the record. And like I said, we, we're not allowed to remove them until we're told we can take them. So it's, it's not real pretty. But my plea is this, read this report and know that we need a warehouse that's heated, cooled, climate-controlled, something where we can remove the records in the courthouse when we start working on the building. Because it's, it really, they just cannot stay here while there's construction going on. And the Archives is happy to be in charge of those records whenever that happens. We'll go over, we'll tend to them, we'll make sure that the climate is right for them, whatever space that we find to house those records in. And really, you know, y'all need to plan ahead when you're planning on working on the courthouse to get this handled. And I'm sure this is a good time for me to introduce Katie. Katie, do you want to stand up? Katie May Smith is my replacement. She started today. She's been volunteering with us for twenty months. She's been there almost twenty hours a week for twenty months on her own time because she loves what we do, which I think is amazing. And she's very well aware of everything that's been happening. We've been keeping her abreast. She helped do all the measuring. We measured everything in cubic feet. We did all the measuring, and she was here in the courthouse. She knows what this is going to mean. But when that time comes and we do find somewhere to take our records, then she will mind them. The staff at the Archives will take care of them while they're being housed. Now, afterwards, after the courthouse is put back together, then each court clerk can decide what they really can do without. And I'm going to say, a lot of them don't know that they can do without what they're holding on to in this building. Many of those records could have already come to the Archives. But that's, you know, that's between them and their crew, I guess. But, you know, we'll have to have a place to put all these things. But that was it. That's really what I wanted to say. Before I leave here, I want y'all to know what's coming and what we need to do to properly take care of our historical documents. They're so precious. And then I also want to say, I'm not getting emotional. It's been such a pleasure to serve Giles County. And it means a lot to me because my father's people, my father was born in Atlanta. My father's people, they were all from Giles County. And it was on my bucket list before I finished my career to come down here and work on records for, at the courthouse. And I, and I started thinking about it when I was in my twenties. And so it's been an honor. And I appreciate all the support every one of you have given me through this time. We have done a lot in six years, and I'm very proud of the work we've done. And we couldn't have done it without y'all. I appreciate it so much.
Okay, the floor is now open for public comment for any issues that are on the agenda. Any members of the public would like to make a comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll move forward. Thank you. Next is elections. And we're going to split this into two parts. We're going to do our notaries first, and then we'll look at the Giles County Water Alliance.
Notaries, question, large, we have the following renewal. The following notary, new notaries are Amber Gritson, Melissa Bottoms, Harper, Caitlin Hilton, Rhett, Murphy, Cameron B. Quinto. Their renewals are Susan V. Angus, Chalika R. Christian, Mary Crandall, Mackenzie J. Fair, Jacqueline Wilber, Janice Roberts Glover, Jennifer Morris Pitt, Karen DeMisaro, and Jane M. Williams.
Okay, Mr. Wilber. Motion to approve. And second by the schools, please. Any comments or discussion? Okay, please use your tablets to vote.
Doesn't like any footprint on here.
How, not voting?
No, sir. Let me slide.
Can we take your vote automatically?
Yes.
Yes, voters?
Yes, yes.
Vote is twenty-one ayes.
And the motion carries. Okay, next in the April seventh Environmental Committee. We made two decisions. One was not to fund a water study for the county, but we decided to stand up an alliance, a partnership with the water utilities together with two commissioners. Next month, we're going to add a member of the public to that partnership. But today, I wanted you all to have an opportunity to select two commissioners with the terms to expire in September, so we'll do that annually. And so today, we're just looking for two members to serve until September. The floor is up for motion schools.
I'm not the name Anna Curry.
Okay. And there's no seconds required. Any other nominations, Mr. Reedy?
David Wumble.
Okay, Mr. Rubelsky?
Ed LeDore.
Okay, we have three nominations. Ms. Curry, Mr. Wumble, Mr. Redor. Do all three of you all want to serve? Will you serve?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, so we need to have a vote. Or we have to have a, is there a motion to have nominations ceased? Okay? Okay, all in favor of nomination ceasing, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Ms. Curry.
She has two names.
Two names, Curry and Wumble. Dr. White.
Wumble and Curry.
Just word. Curry and Wumble. Mr. Jones.
Wumble and Curry.
Mr. Wumble.
Alex Dan.
Ms. Wilber.
Wumble and Curry.
Mr. Adams.
Curry and Wumble.
This guy's Curry and Wumble. Mr. Rice.
Wumble and Curry.
Mr. Hopkins.
Curry and Wumble.
Mr. Reedy.
Curry and Wumble.
Mr. Savage.
Curry and the door.
Mr. Butler.
Curry and the door.
Ms. Jones.
Curry.
The door.
Mr. Rubelsky.
Curry, the door.
Mr. the door.
Curry, the door.
Ms. Graham.
The door, Mary, Curry. Ms. Sullivan.
The door and Curry.
Ms. Sutton.
Ms. Curry and Mr. the door.
Ms. Phillips.
Curry and the door.
And Ms. Bruegg.
Curry, the door.
And Ms. Frank.
The door, Curry.
Twenty votes for Ms. Curry, eleven for Mr. Wumble, and nine for Mr. the door. When it's done?
I got ten. Mr. Savage. What was your vote again?
It was Curry and the door.
So Ms. Curry is a member, and we need to have a runoff between Mr. Wumble and Mr. the door. So just vote for one as we go around for a roll call, please.
Graham, was it a tie?
Yes, it was a ten-ten tie.
Ms. Curry? Wumble?
Just a second. Yes. Should you not break the tie?
Yep.
I don't know for sure, but you said. You have ten-ten ties. I can break the tie and save you some time, right?
Sure.
Okay. I'll vote for Mr. the door. He's passionate about this and has to be voted again. Thank you, Mr. Wilber.
Thank y'all.
And thank you, Mr. Wumble. And thank you for reminding me the rules. So those, those appointments will be through September, and we'll have a vote again in September. Okay, reports. There are six reports listed that require permission and acknowledgement. I'll entertain a motion to combine these reports and consider them together. Mr. Savage and, and Mr. Butler, seconds. Any comments or questions on combining those? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Do you vote? Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to accept the reports as listed. Mr. Hopkins and Mr. Savage. Yeah, we can vote on the tablet. We'll use the tablets just a moment, please. Okay, a yes vote is to accept the reports. Please vote, please.
The vote is twenty-one ayes.
And the motion carries. Okay, the contracts. The contract in your package is for the $2 million CCF grant that will fund the expansion of the county library. The 10% grant match is being paid by the library. All the funds are going to be flowing through the county finance office following all the county procurement procedures. So that's how the money, the money will flow through the county, but it's not going to be using any county funds. Mr. Jones?
Motion.
Motion to approve the contract. Second is Mr. Hopkins. Questions or comments? Yes, ma'am, Mr. Jones.
I'm just curious, where are they expanding? Can I say some expansion, but where are they expanding?
Okay, Mr. the door, would you like to answer that?
Essentially, they're going to knock out the back wall and build out toward what is their parking lot. So they cut into their parking, but essentially expanding the back part of the building. So that probably means a little roof extension too.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, please vote. Okay, we'll take a voice vote. Mr. Reedy?
Yes.
And the vote is twenty-one ayes.
And the motion carries. Okay, moving into the resolutions, we're going to do 2025-18 first. I'm going to give a kind of a lengthy explanation here because this is the first time the county's had to do opioid fund dispersment. So the opioid epidemic led to thousands of federal lawsuits against the manufacturers, the distributors, and the retailers of opioid products. And these culminated in multi-billion dollar settlements involving monetary damages to compensate, compensate the state and, state and local governments for the effects of opioid abuse and the effects that it put on the public health system and on law enforcement. So the Tennessee Opioid Abatement Council was established, and they managed the dispersment of proceeds from lawsuits relating to the opioid crisis. It The state council, their primary purpose is to ensure that those funds are used to prevent and address the abuse and misuse of opioid products. The state council oversees the entire fund, and 70% of that fund goes to settlement proceeds, 15% goes to the state's general fund, and another 15% goes to local governments, and that's proportion that we're dispersing. Giles County's first dispersment totaled $140,000, I'm sorry, $140,164.76. So, that funding has to be used for the awareness, education, and/or recovery of opioid abuse. So, Giles County's Opioid Abatement Council assessed and scored six applications that came in, and based on the scoring criteria, they focused on prevention and treatment programs that positively impacted Giles County citizens. That was a major focus. The opioid council recommended a funding breakdown that's outlined in your resolution. So, that's $98,320 to the Giles County Sheriff's Department for a full-time case manager, $31,250 to Duquesne and Ranch to aid their participants in overcoming opioid addictions, and the remainder, which is $10,594.76 to the shelter to provide support services to families impacted by opioid abuse. And so, you all saw this through your budget committee that assessed what the council reported, that was on April 4th. So, that's a little bit of the background and history, and hopefully, the public can understand that those opioid funds have to be used for a very specific purpose. And the opioid council here locally makes sure that they follow all the state guidelines for that. So, that, the floor is open for a motion to approve the resolution. Mr. Rubelsky?
Motion to approve.
And a second for Mr. Brown. Okay. Comments or discussion or questions? Okay. Seen none, we'll move forward. Is there one, Mr.?
I just want to make a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
Netflix has a pseudo-documentary on the opioid crisis. It's a painful thing to watch, and I don't know if any of you have seen it, but it would explain a lot about opioid addiction, which I did not understand personally. It's painful, but it is important, and it's based on truth. Maybe, not exactly, maybe they took some liberties, but it's called DOPESIC. D-O-P-E-S-I-C-K. And I would recommend it to anyone who has an interest in how this has impacted our country.
And we haven't had an opioid council meeting in a while, but when they resume, which will be in the fall, when we look at the next dispersment of funds. If you can show up, you'll hear stories locally, too, about how our citizens are impacted and families. Thank you. Okay, we're prepared for votes. Okay? If you have not yet voted, you can vote.
Votes, twenty-one ayes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, I'm not aware of any unfinished business. Do you all have any?
We got to.
Oh, yeah, thank you. We're moving ahead. So, we have budget amendments. 2025-17 includes a budget amendment for the opioid money, and these were all approved unanimously on April 4th. So, the floor is open for motion. Mr. Rubelsky and Mr. Hopkins, comments or discussion? Plenty of time for comments if you have. All right, please vote. Hold on a second. All right, now we can vote. Thanks.
Votes, twenty-one ayes.
And the motion carries. Okay, now, is there any unfinished business that you all have? Okay, any new business? Standing between Mr. Butler and his Mexican dinner. I've got announcements, a couple of announcements, CPUI. Note that Kevin Rose's retirement, we celebrated that last week, but his last day is on January... I'm sorry. Last day, the 30th of this month, equal 30th. And then, welcome to Beel and Callup, so if you get a chance to run by the extension office before the 30th. But Kevin's not going anywhere. He said he's going to be working here for a bit. Also, note, May first, 2:00 PM at the Archives, that's where we're going to be sending off to Barbara. The building committee and/or the emergency services committee meeting, I'm not sure which yet. We're going to have a meeting on April 29th, next Tuesday, at 9:00 AM. We're going to meet at the ambulance station, and we're going to be considering the 808 North First Street Speed Vet Building. The architect that went through that building last week said he could have a report for us by the end of this week. So, as soon as I have a report, I'll be forwarding that to you all, and we can meet on Tuesday. I'll get the agenda out ASAP. The application for nonprofit funding is out, it's in public size, it's on the website. GilesCountyTN.gov is where you can find the application. But those of you who may first at 4:00 PM, so far, we only seek one. So, if you're representing nonprofit organizations that are submitting for funds, please remind those folks to get their applications. Okay, are there any other announcements? Yes, sir.
I just wanted to say, since we have our meetings in the evening, we're glad to see all the public here tonight.
Yes, thank you.
We didn't have to get out of these four chairs.
Point taken.
Thank y'all. Thank you.
Okay. Any other announcements? All right, motion. Motion to adjourn and second, any opposed? All right, we're adjourned. Thanks for your work tonight.